A quorum is present, and so would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? Once again, we'll open with public comments. I only have one person that has indicated public comments, and that is Ron Hartman, who wishes to speak to the August minutes. Ron?
Thank you for the opportunity. Again, in the spirit of transparency, thank you for updating the August 22 meeting minutes to reflect who voted for and against the purchase of the Fort Ground Bar, Fort Ground Grill. In the spirit of transparency, I'd like to have this additional information put into the minutes. On July 14th, at the board meeting, the three appointed trustees, which we've now learned voted to purchase the Fort Ground Grill from a previous Coeur d'Alene mayor for a million dollars. They also voted to rent it back to him for $1,200 a month, or $14,400. I acquired a copy of the appraisal on page 50, quote, "potential rent income during the first year of analysis"
Excuse me, Mr. Hartman?
At $69,552, based on the market rent app
Mr. Hartman?
Applied to the subject. That's $5,800.
Mr. Hartman?
Mr. Hartman, please, I need to remind everybody, I've stopped your time. I need to remind everybody that this is, this is me, occurs in public. This is a business meeting of the Board of Trustees. It's not a public meeting, and there's no requirement that public comment even be allowed, but the board does allow it within some limited parameters. Those parameters are that it's two minutes of comment by the public, and it has to be on an agenda item for this meeting. Now, you've mentioned
Are the minutes on the meeting?
The approval of the minutes is on the meeting.
Okay, then what's the problem? Let's get back to minutes.
For the board to consider the minutes and the approval, it does not open this up to relitigate or rediscuss everything that happened.
I want to hear what Hartman has to say, Mr. Lyons. Can you be quiet, please?
So trustee McKenzie, regardless of what you want to hear, this is not appropriate public comment.
No, no, let's let the chair run the meeting. You're the lawyer. Be quiet.
That's, thank you, Greg. Mr. Hartman, I think you have two minutes, and please stick to the agenda item.
This is the minutes. The rent should be $5,800 a month per the same appraisal. We're only getting $1,200 a month. Why? You used the appraisal for a million dollars to buy it. On page 22, the assessed value by the county was only $3,5,317. Far cry from a million dollars you paid for it. I just wanted to set the record on that, but that I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Next agenda item, a happier one, celebrating success, the NIC Outdoor Pursuits Program, Sean Noel.
Good evening, Chair Wald, Board of Trustees, President Swain, Mr. Lyons, audience members. Thanks for joining us. Celebrating student success. It's one of the great things that we should be talking about, and we have a great item here coming up, Outdoor Pursuits. One of probably the programs that fit so well in this area. We have so many students that have gone through this program and live out this dream of what they can do with Outdoor Pursuits. And I'm going to turn it over to Terry Britton to talk about some of the successes of our students, and so you can learn more about the program.
Thank you, Sean. Yeah, I have a little presentation here. I'd like to just go through and introduce some folks to what we do at Outdoor Pursuits, and then again, talk about some of the good stuff that our students have done. Our team, there's Sean, he's our director, as well as the athletics director, no small job there. Myself, Terry Britton, I'm the coordinator for Outdoor Pursuits, and then an assistant coordinator named Brett Van Gogh weeks, and Steve McGordy, all of our financial services. I think it's important to know that we've had 100% turnover in all these positions in the last six months, with the exception of Steve. But the good news is that Brett and myself have both had a long connection to NIC. And I've worked as the assistant coordinator in this program for the last seven years. And Brett came to us through an internship program that we used to run back in 2015, and since then, worked as a river ranger on the middle fork of the salmon and the shoots in John Day River, as well as an avalanche educator through the local avalanche center. Our mission, we provide, we exercise both body and mind through wilderness-based environmentally outdoor adventures. Our activities foster educational growth through health awareness, teamwork, and risk-taking. We provide a nonprofit outdoor service with trips and rentals for all those in our community. And I threw up a picture here from our most recent trip to the Oregon coast this last weekend, of one of our students who I'd like to recognize later in the presentation. But in this picture, he's taking a nap outdoors while reading a book, which I'd just like to pause on that for a moment and reflect on how that's a relatively rare occurrence these days. And the things we do are activity-based, but they also give students time to unplug and reflect and enjoy a change of scenery. So, yeah. We provide rentals, trips, adventure consultation. We have a tremendous workshop space, as you can see in those pictures, where we house and maintain all of NIC's outdoor equipment. But that workshop space is also available for students to come and learn how to work on their bikes, how to tune their skis, and we have a tremendous library, we have maps, and we have a lot of local knowledge that helps students plan and prepare and pull off their own outdoor adventures, which is ultimately the goal. We've done thousands of individual rental orders over the last year with hundreds of new customers coming to us, both community members and students, both through the shop here and through our Sunspot Beach Rental Facility that you may be familiar with. We also work with a ton of different organizations, both on campus and off of campus, and I can kind of break those into just a few different categories there. We work with student government and student activities. We work with employee wellness initiatives here on campus, and we work with the common marketing department to provide media to help highlight some of these unique outdoor adventure opportunities that students have when they come here. And I think that that's going to be, should be, a very important part of our recruitment strategies moving forward.
I have a question for the speaker.
We work with both local park and rec offices. We work with advocacy groups on service projects. We work with other college outdoor rec programs in the area that don't have the capabilities that we have, so we provide contract services. And we work with therapeutic recreation programs. One of the ones I'm particularly proud of is our partnership with Dog Smile Adventures, which is a therapeutic sailing program that works with veterans. They work with special needs recreation groups and youth programs, and basically anybody that can benefit from spending some time outdoors on the lake through the vehicle of sailing. So this is really what we're here to talk about, student learning development and success. You know, our programs foster camaraderie, connect both between students and to the institution. Important for retention. They develop resilience and help foster a healthy body-mind. And I'd like to tell the story of a couple of students. We have a few of them in this picture here. The two guys in the top right with the red jacket and the gray and white jacket. That was part of a group of four students, Devin, Lane, Lucy, and Tyler, that you may have read were involved in a pretty daring rescue on the beach this summer. And were instrumental in helping save two drowning victims off of the NIC dock. But those, I'll talk about Devin and Lane a little bit. They came to us originally to learn how to use their snowboards, and through that learned that we do backcountry skiing education and trips, and started doing that programming, took some avalanche education through us, eventually participated in our Willawa Mountains backcountry ski trip, which is one of our signature trips where students go down in October and work with a local outfitter to help establish a backcountry ski camp in the Eagle Cap Wilderness in Northeast Oregon. And that involves cutting a lot of firewood, and it's in the wilderness, so there's no mechanized tools. So we do it all with two-person crosscut saws by hand, and axes and mauls and hauling wood by hand. So the students that do at work trip and then gain the necessary education and training to be able to do the backcountry ski trip in April, if they do the work trip, they earn a spot on the ski trip, they still have to hike all their gear in up to 7,000 feet in the wilderness where the yurts are, and then even after that, they still have to climb the mountains that they're then going to ski, which is all the way up to about 10,000 feet in the Alpine in Oregon there. And by the time that they're standing on top of that, you know, perfect untracked run without another soul in sight in this beautiful valley in the Willawas, they put so much work into that, that effort, that the rewards far outweigh what they could get anywhere else. And through that experience, they, they both have the NIC Outdoor Recreation Leadership Degree Program and are pursuing a career in outdoor leadership, and they work with us. We, at Outdoor Pursuits, have student employees that help run our beach rental facility. They help run the climbing wall. They help keep things going at the shop, and they help lead trips. So that leadership experience, the self-confidence, and the, you know, self-reliance that they, skills that they develop in this program, I'm sure were instrumental in the success of that rescue. They heard that there was two people on the bottom of the lake, and without even thinking about it, they, the four, those four students who were all in the Outdoor Recreation Leadership Program for Tyler, who's in the nursing program but participates in our program and works with us, they dropped everything without even thinking about it, jumped in the lake, pulled two people off the bottom that had fully aspirated water, were unconscious, and would likely not be with us if they had been there, you know, down there any longer, performed CPR, and revived both of those people. And they still had to go off to the hospital because it was a pretty major trauma that they were involved in. But, yeah, it's just another example of the benefits and the skills that are resultant from the programming that we do. They declined to be recognized here. They have been kind of hounded by local reporters and various other people that have been trying to parade them in front of various crowds over the months since that happened. So I volunteered to come here and speak on their behalf, but I just think that those actions are, while they say that they declined to be recognized for it because it feels normal to them, and that's because of the skills and the culture in which they found here at NIC and the home that they found. So, yeah, that's all I have for you today, and I thank you for your time, and you'll have to excuse me if I'm going to dip out of this meeting when this, after this presentation. I've been working on the last two weekends and evening programming, and I got to get home before my wife forgets what my face looks like. So, thank you, everybody.
A question for you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from board members?
Mr. Chairman, yes, Mr. Chairman, I resemble the gentleman with the book on his chest.
Oh.
I don't call it a book, though. I call it a chest weight.
Right. I think it's worth mentioning that that book is about the Caribbean, and Lane was introduced to sailing through our program and has been working with us and working with Dog Smile Adventures through this last summer. And that's through our connection with those people and others, local captain David Killman, we do have some connections in the Caribbean and Grenada for them to pursue a career in the marine industry doing offshore charters. They're going for it. So I think seeing him there in front of the ocean with that book on his chest dreaming, it just warms my heart, so.
I have a question. What building, sorry, I'm remote, so I'm going to just go for it. What building is the repair facility in?
We're in McLean Hall, so the oldest building on campus, right across from the beach facility. We actually, we're originally in the basement of the sub years ago. We had a closet, and we had our big equipment stored at the Armory up on Ninth Street. So there was commuting involved, and we did not have the workshop space that we have now. And we actually got that building on the contingency that we did not need any improvements in it. So it was completely gutted. It used to be the, the maintenance shop for facilities, and before that, it was an auto shop program. And, you know, it's kind of rough around the edges, but we wouldn't have it any other way. We absolutely love that space, and we would not be able to pull off the programming and offerings that we do without it. So, yeah.
Thank you. Once again, are there any other questions from trustees? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Great program. We'll move on to the constituent reports. The first one, associate student, Damian Maxwell. Damian?
Okay, I'm here. Good evening, Board of Trustees. So Aznic has been working on a few things recently. We have the Aznic Suite remodel is finally wrapping up, and we're hoping to have it open to students by next week. Aznic attended the Humans Rights Task Force banquet, which was very cool. It was awesome. Kind of going through and watching that documentary and meeting lots of pretty influential people in Coeur d'Alene. We have a strategic ending meeting coming up that's going to feature keynote speaker Tony Stewart. We also went over the results of the spring survey, so we have a good idea of what kind of projects we want to take on this semester, or whether it was student concern last year. We also have the response, the academic best practice resolution that we submitted last year, which we'll be going over and sort of figuring out all the details and working with the staff to sort of get that going. And then I had the first meeting with five of the eight student government presidents over Zoom, which was a really great opportunity. We talked about scholarships and that sort of thing, the state of Idaho. Thank you.
It was good to see you and your table at the Saturday night. You folks were very, very much part of that. Thank you for being there. Are there any other questions for Damian? Not appearing.
You're good.
I think you're good. Thank you, Damian. Faculty Assembly, Ben Sheehan.
Sure, well, thank you. And it is Teshaida, it's Idaho. I think Idaho, it's got Ida at the end, Teshaida. Yeah.
Three times and I'll have it right.
No problem. It's a rough one, so definitely forgive you there. Chair, old members of the board, I don't have a long report today. The faculty did meet in September. Our only agenda item was to discuss virtual attendance at our meetings. We did follow up with a special meeting, and we now do have a plan developed forward. We do have in our bylaws a specific process that we do need to follow. And so I will be working to try and follow that best as I can, and that way we can update our bylaws and make sure that we have full transparency on how we're proceeding with our meetings. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you, Ben. I'll do better next month. I even rehearsed your name with Shannon, had it right, and then blew it.
You're fully forgiven. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff Assembly, Carrie Summitt.
You got that one correct, so good job. So, good evening, Board of Trustees members. Our staff assembly last met on September 8. I'd like to thank the staff at Parker Technical for hosting the biometric screenings this past month and allowing me to stay and conduct the staff assembly meeting while in their building. They were gracious hosts, and I very much appreciate them. We welcomed President Swain to our first official staff assembly meeting for the 2022-2023 school year. He spoke briefly to staff and encouraged staff to provide feedback throughout the year. We will be providing a short period of time for President Swain to address staff assembly, ask questions, and seek feedback at the beginning of each staff assembly meeting. This is an informal invitation, which gives President Swain the opportunity to directly address staff, as well as provide an opportunity to staff to provide feedback or ask questions of President Swain as well. We move forward with the new employee introductions. It's wonderful to see all the new faces to our NIC staff and to welcome them aboard. We celebrated our sterling silver winner, Steve Kurtz, who needs no introduction. The award was well-deserved, and we very much appreciate his dedication to NIC. Staff celebrated staff by giving shout-outs to their coworkers, and it's always great to see how NIC staff support and celebrate one another. Laura Godfrey, Associate Professor in English and Humanities, spoke to staff assembly and invited information on the Student Learning Outcomes Assessment Committee. It is always wonderful to learn about different committees and the important work they do across campus. This was a committee that was unfamiliar to me, so it was really interesting to learn about their assessments and data review, and how this information helps to support NIC's missions and values. We also allotted time for good of the order in the staff assembly forum before adjourning. I would like to take this time to address just a single concern regarding future ongoing Board of Trustee meetings, if I may. I would like to caution our Board of Trustee members against making broad statements in Board of Trustee meetings referring to a general consensus of how staff assembly feels regarding actions taken by Board of Trustee members or members. I would like to respectfully remind members of the board that they do not speak on behalf of staff. That's my role. And if there is a question or concern to how staff feels as a whole or in part, just please follow the appropriate avenues of communication. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Carrie. I think that's good advice.
Thank you.
Any questions for Carrie, for many trustees?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senate Report. Neil Doyle. Neil?
Thank you, Chairman Wald, Board Trustees, President Swain, guests. NIC Senate has actually met twice since our last Board of Trustees meeting. The first was on August 25th. The second was September 15th. During the August 25th meeting, we completed the second read of the Policy and Procedure 3.02.08, which is the Faculty Employment Policy and Procedure that was passed. We also reviewed 3.02.21 Faculty Evaluation Policy and Procedure. That was the second read as well. That was passed. And the tenure procedure, which is 3.02.09, was the second read, but we tabled that for some additional questions in our next meeting. During the September 15th meeting, we revisited that 3.02.09 with Kerry Gibson in attendance to answer some outstanding questions. After the questions, we voted and approved that second read. We also revisited the previously passed Procedure 3.02.08 that had come back to us with some PC feedback. We also approved the updated version. And then we had a first read on 3.02.29, which is alternate work schedules, which we did approve for a second read with some minor recommended changes. Lastly, we actually had our CIO Ken Wardinsky join the meeting to discuss some accessibility changes to the templates that we use for our policies and procedures, ideally to make them more accessible through things like screen readers or any of the other accessibilities. The Senate such a change, and we'll be working with Ken to update those templates going forward. That concludes my report on the Senate work for August and September. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Neil? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move ahead with the President's Report. Dr. Swain.
Thank you. So I'm going to start, so today I got the pleasure of riding around with Bill Young. Anybody know Bill Young? He's a, he works in the Small Business Development Center and is a mentor to many businesses in the area, small businesses. And so he asked me if I'd want to go out and do it with some small businesses. So I did. I'll get to that in a second, but on the way back, he said, you know, in talking to them, he said, Nick, I'm a coach. Would you like to be coached? Okay, sure, sure, Bill. So what Bill said is three things. He said, start with a mission. When you tell a story, so start with a mission, identify a goal, and then tell good news stories. So I'm going to follow his advice. I went, had to go back and edit my notes for tonight. But, so I'm going to start with this, the mission of North Idaho College. North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and northern Idaho communities. It serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning. But I think that's, that's why we're here, and I think it's important to keep that in mind. So the big goal, we, so the enrollment is part, it's not just part of the business, it's of education. It's also part of our accreditation. We got to turn the enrollment numbers around. And so we're focused on a goal of increasing enrollment to 5,004 credit students by the fall of 2023. Right now, we're at 4,200, so it's a lofty goal, and growing towards a goal of 6,000 by 2025. So that's, that's the goal. And then good news stories. There are a lot of them. I had to keep adding them. Our team closed out a tournament in Washington State. I'm not a golfer, so I don't know the exact term, but they won, and it was a tournament over the weekend and, and beat everybody. So that's, that's a pretty good news story. With, I think with golf, you know, scores, not physically. So the, the next good news story is last time we talked about some of the challenges with accreditation and how things popped up in odd places. And one of those Steve Kurtz showed was the VA website where students or veterans go to sign up for classes with their VA. And there was a big, bold warning that said IC is under review. It's a big red sign, and so if you click on it, it doesn't matter what it said, you get the message that, don't go here from veterans. And as a result, our veteran numbers plummeted year to year. So Steve wrote a letter to the NW, NWCCA or CCU, and and they, they were happy to respond. They were happy to correct it, but they didn't know who, you know, who do you send it to in the VA? And so luckily, I, through my old job, knew somebody who knew somebody, and we sent it there, and it took two weeks, just two weeks, to get the VA to take that off. And so I think that's a, that's a big for us. And then I'm going to call out Bill Young and his, and his businesses. We went to Mountain Madness Soap. Anybody? Incredible place. The woman that run, that started it, started it in North Pole, Alaska, and ended up moving down here to run the business. And they're, they're, thanks to Bill's work, turning a huge profit this year. Ironstone Furniture and Fire. And I, it's a great shop. They had a great story going back again 20 years, and really, over the last five years, completely turning the business around because of the work they had done with Bill. And I told them that I'm not letting my wife go there. And then High Point Medical started off as a medical billing company, now does IT, and then started cybersecurity. They just opened up an office in Boise. And again, the Skip Meyer is the CEO there, just, just absolutely emphasized how much of a difference it made to have access to Bill. And he also, when he sat down, he said, the last nine people I've hired that do medical billing got their training from NIC. So the last nine people. And he says, oh, and you know what? The last five people that I hired in my IT came from NIC. So NIC is, is is integral and a necessary component to his business. He said, I wouldn't be in business without NIC. So, so that's, that's pretty good. We're going, we're going to give you more details in Steve's got an update on our enrollment numbers, but I just wanted to kind of give you an update, just a quick, good news story on it. In August, our enrollment number report indicated a possible year-to-year decline of over 11%, or over 10%, almost 11% year-to-year decline. And we've been pushing since I got here, pushing enrollment. We got to fix it. We got to fix it. And, and I say that universally, everybody is on board. When I have a meeting, everybody gets it. Everybody understands. Everybody understands their role in it, and they, and they're not sensitive about it. And so they come back and said, we've changed the deadline for dual credit. I don't know why we made dual credit so close to the start of high school that kids couldn't sign up. So all they did is change the deadline, and 350 more kids signed up for dual credit. And so in the end, all, you know, everything done. I mean, they were calling people. They were doing everything they could. In the end, our percentage is still at 7%, but we recruited so many people out of state that are year-to-year impact on that our year to year impact on, on the budget is exactly what they budgeted last year. So I think that's a really good news story that shows we can get this thing turned around. We can get the enrollment turned on and just getting people lined up and taking ownership of this thing is a big deal. So, so that's the good news stories. So I've, I hope Bill Young is watching and says, okay, you did it. Before we get too far, though, I wanted to recognize the service commitment of Cassie Silva's. Cassie's not with us tonight. She served as our interim provost. She's retiring again for the second time. She couldn't be with us, but I did want to acknowledge her dedication, service, particularly since January 22. She is, she has really provide, provided academic leadership during some pretty tough times. So to Cassie, wherever you are, thank you for your service. So there's a lot going on at NIC. I'm going to just cover the rest of my notes here. We're making a lot of progress on our recruiting, enrollment and marketing efforts. It's a, it's a it's a full, full package. Our intent of stopping the decline enrollment and actually turn it around for the first time in 10 years. Everyone told me, when I talked to my friends back in Virginia before coming out here, lots of the presidents from the Virginia Community Colleges said, it's going to be 100 little things. It's not, it's not going to be one thing that you can pin on one person. It's 100 little things, which actually makes it harder. Because you got to focus on all those 100 little things and keep people energized and moving forward on all of those. And I'd say we have a great staff that's working all, all that. So I'm very proud of the progress I've made in just the past seven weeks. But changing processes, changing attitudes, procedures, marketing, building relationships, actually working to create a new competitive culture where we're fighting to win and not just letting things happen is, is a real, real change for us. And, and also just keeping that focus on students. Always focus on the students and the student experience is, is the critical piece. It's nothing profound. I mean, you look, it's just mundane stuff. But it's just getting all that stuff done and giving people the permission to proceed and take the initiative is, is an incredible. It's, I think it's, it's, it's an incredible awakening. People are excited to have that opportunity. So everyone stepping up to the challenge of working together, coordinating, planning, making real change that's, that's needed to get NIC to start competing. I have met, I have met with all the area superintendents, the public, in the public schools. I've met with almost all of the district guidance counselors from the five Northern Idaho counties. They, in conversations with them, they confirmed the things that we were identifying on our side that we need to fix. Yep, you need to fix that. Yep, you need to fix that. So we're, we're on track. I think we're doing the right thing. And just a reminder, this enrollment is a critical piece of our accreditation. Because accreditation looks at the whole business of higher education. The leadership, enrollment, academics, everything separately. So enrollment is, was, is mentioned as part of action plan. I've also started working on strategic planning, which has to get started again. The, I, I start, start looking at things that we need to do on campus and where we need to change facilities or, or move things around. And I started looking at the 20, the, the last strategic plan that was published came out 2020 to 2025. In meeting with staff, I'll just say you can almost drive a truck through some of it. The, the goals and objectives are not tight. The, there's not a reflective element of it. So we're not doing self improvement. We're not self reflecting. It was talking about delivery of things as if they already existed. So we've got to fix all that stuff and get it moving. We've got to do that in parallel with doing all the other things that we're doing with recruiting and, and enrollment. So there's a lot to do. We started on several aspects of the and in preparation for really kicking that off again in January. And so again, we talk about the strategic purpose of trustees. One of the things I noticed in the last strategic plan is that, is that the trustees were not included in the strategic planning process. So I really want to get the trustees to be part of that and engage with the community. So you'll hear more on that in the next few months. Insurance, you know, as a, as a part of all the things going on over the, over the past year, including weather events. The ICrimp canceled our insurance. We were able to get it extended out through the end of September. Our interim vice president for finance and business has been working with the local broker and, and several national carriers to establish insurance coverage for the campus. So they've been sending us policies back and forth, right up until a few minutes before this meeting, they were sending things back and forth. So as of tonight, we do have liability coverage. We're still receiving updates. There's still other things to carry on. Everything is going to be affected as of Saturday because our insurance ends on Friday. So we're working on that and I'm going to ask Sarah to come up and just talk briefly about that, I guess, as she makes the, the walk of fame. I, I want to also, another, another good news story is that she recently led the institution through its annual report. The, the audit was conducted by, sorry, the annual audit, the annual audit was conducted by Heidi Bailey. And for the eighth consecutive year, the college has a clean financial statement, which is an incredible track record and speaks to the strong financial leadership of her team. So Sarah, if you want to talk about insurance.
I will be happy to talk about insurance. Chairman Wald, Board of Trustees, as, as you know, ICrimp notified us very early this year that they were not going to renew our policy. And we were successful in getting a 90 day extension or actually not an extension, a short term policy from them for 90 days. Since the original notification, we have been working diligently with our broker to acquire new insurance on the open market. It has been a long process and we have been declined by many national firms, just declined for various reasons to provide us with a quote. We did have, we do have a quote at this, at this time for essentially all of our liability auto, auto general, employee benefits, employment practices, E and O, directors and officers, all those liability issues we have a firm quote that, that we feel is our best option at this point. We have a quote on property insurance that we are hoping we can find a better overall package on the property insurance, but we do have a quote that is valid and we can execute on. And that would, between those two quotes, we would have full insurance coverage as of Saturday.
And I, I think the ICrimp, it's not a done deal with ICrimp. If we, if things improve, we can potentially in a year, go back to ICrimp and maybe get, get them to consider recover, return.
It's not a permanent, a permanent ban.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it's, it's, they're not comfortable with us at this point in time, but if things are to change and we are to show improvement in our, and our losses and some of the other issues that we're dealing with, there is the option for us to reach out to them and ask if they would be interested in allowing us back into the pool.
And, and the plan is to make, to try to go out for a competitive
Yes, sir.
RFP again.
Yes, sir. So I have made the commitment that in the spring of 2023, that we will put out an RFP for broker services for insurance, specifically for insurance. Regardless of whether we're with ICrimp or anyone else, we will still need a broker record. And so we will put out a full RFP process for that, advertise for it, go through the evaluation and identify a broker going forward.
Thanks. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You indicated earlier that you're going to have a comparison of coverage between the ICrimp plan and what, what you're putting in place.
Yes.
Will that be available at any time in the near future?
Yes, absolutely. Once, once we have settled on, on which policies and which carriers we are doing, I'm going to work with our, our current broker, which is Payne West, to do a gap analysis between the ICrimp coverage and our current coverage and to do that and to provide a metric that. So we will, we will be providing that. That will be available to the board if that's something.
If, if we're able, it'll be part of the October.
Follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry. Are you aware whether the coverage includes cyber liability?
We have a separate, we have actually a, a separate quote for cyber liability. Yes.
Thank you.
I have some things.
Greg, Pastor McKenzie, you have a question?
Yeah. VP Finance, Garcia, would you please provide us a list of all the government agencies in the nearby counties who are not using ICrimp? I believe there's several that I've talked to, several people who are chosen not to use ICrimp. So if you could just give us a list of similar, I think, I think Bonner County, and I want to say someone in Sandpoint.
I'm not sure if I have that avail, information available to me, but I will, I will make an, I, I know that yes, not everyone is covered by ICrimp. It's
I know, I know ICrimp's good friends with trustee Geddes and crew, but it'd be nice to just be having informed information.
I will gather what I can from what's publicly available regarding insurance coverage for other governmental entities. And I will make that part of the, if I can get that in time, I will bring it with the gap analysis.
There you go. My other questions are for
As parents, I'm aware of Bonner, Ada County that are not with ICrimp. And ICrimp has over 1,000 public entities insured in this state.
Also, for the record, Canyon County is no longer with ICrimp either.
A library somewhere up north.
A Bonner County, County Library.
Are there any other questions for Sarah?
Not for Sarah, but I have some for the President.
I'm, I'm almost done. Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Sarah.
So I, I want to talk a bit more about enrollment, recruiting, marketing. Substantial part of our work and change of direction with our enrollment numbers includes pulling together the data, analyzing what we have, finding direction and, and then identifying direct and indirect data that will fill the gaps in what we know. Steve Kurtz is going to provide some more comprehensive enrollment report starting tonight. We'll continue to expand on that as we are able to, by, you know, that sometimes the data just doesn't exist or it hasn't been collected or compiled. And so Steve is working with his team and, and around the campus to find the data that we need and pull that all together so that we can really start doing meaningful analysis. So we're in the, in the process of doing that. And then I'll say thanks for our discussion on dual credit programs. Last month, we started really thinking about intentionally using dual credit or as a recruiting tool. So out of the 1,700 students that take how many of them matriculate to NIC, how many of them go on to four-year institutions, how many don't go on at all? Some of the data, you just, you would think it was easily available, but it just isn't. And so we, we think we can find it, but we haven't, haven't gone after it in the past. And so figuring out where that data exists, because the students, particularly those that don't go on, are, are students that should go on. They've already invested time and effort into, into education. They've already been here and been successful. So we'd like to figure out ways to, of reaching out to them. And then in our, in our discussion of that, we, we discovered that a lot of students that have gone on to four-year institutions, one of our, our staff member said her daughter is at U of I and two or three of her roommates have already dropped out. It's too expensive. It was too, too big of a, a place, whatever the case may be. And so another area that we're working on is getting, getting out to all those students that took NIC credits through, through either dual credit or, or regular and transferred to U of I or other four years in the state, reaching out to them and saying, hey, we're still here. Come on back, finish your associate's degree, do that here. It's, it costs about 25% of what you're paying at a four-year and, and the, the education is just as good. So come on back, mature a little bit, get those, get those, get your green in your belt. And then maybe if you want to, you can go back to four-year. So that, that concludes my report. We have a couple more things to talk about later with, with regard to searches, but, and, and the and the enrollment, but I'll, I'll cover that with Steve later.
Thank you. Trustee McKenzie, you had a question for the President?
Yes, audio check. Okay. So, Dr. Swain, do you believe the election affects accreditation? That's my question. Some candidates have been campaigning to save accreditation. So what's your opinion?
Do I think accreditation? Yes, I think so. I mean, I think some of the things that that our vice president for business was talking about with respect to our insurance is directly impacted by, and the, the insurance companies have said, we, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know the direction. And so we're not willing to take that risk. If we can't get insurance and folks don't trust our leadership, that, that is exactly, that's 50% of the accreditation problem. Behavior, leadership, all those things are part of the comprehensive, so that it's not like K-12 where K-12 said students didn't pass the test, so the, the school is under accreditation review. In higher ed, they look at everything, leadership, business management, the, the function of the education. All, all of those things carry nearly equal weight. And so if, if people are questioning the leadership, then it absolutely affects accreditation as much as if the, the students weren't passing their tests. So yes, it, it absolutely does affect accreditation.
As in which candidates are selected in the election that impacts selection? As in, you're saying the, am I understanding you correctly?
Yeah, don't put words in my mouth. I said the
I mean, we're going to end up with five trustees after the election, no matter what. So some
So, so if, so depending on the, the leadership that is in place will depend, will, will have an impact on accreditation. I, I reviewed the letter, the action letter and the report from the visit just this afternoon. And, and so board behavior, board actions, the, just many of the things, and I wasn't here for it, but many of the things that they cite in there are absolutely what we're under accreditation review for. So if the board goes direction that, that, that causes the accreditation body to question, then yeah. And so that will be determined by the election, I think.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I was just wondering if you'd be specific on what behavior. I mean, I'm wondering what behavior. I mean, because, well, and I've been here for the past year. I've seen trustees leaking executive session and straight out lying to the community about assaults on campus that haven't happened.
I, I can't, I wasn't here. I can't address it. I, I do know that, that there are, I, I'm not sure which assault you're talking about. But I, I know that, that just because it's not a public record doesn't mean something to things that go in HR files are, are part of HR. They're not public records. So if you do a public records research and you don't find a
If assaults happen on campus, they have to be reported according to Title IX.
No, they don't. People don't have to report via Title IX. That's a choice. People, people choose to report via Title IX. They choose to make police reports. Those are personal choices that people make. It doesn't mean an assault did or did not happen.
Our lawyer has said that there's been no assaults. Everyone that I've been sitting with. So the accreditation letter references a whole dysfunctional board of members who can't even work with each other to the point that they resign.
I, I wasn't here. I can't, I can't speak to that. And, and HR records are not something we should be discussing in open record, in an open meeting. If, if but, but yeah, we can.
Trustee McKenzie, you have a specific reason for asking the questions you're asking?
Yeah, I'm wondering if the accreditation agency is a political agency, apparently. You, let's see, you, what standard or eligibility requirement cites enrollment?
It was in the action letter? Part of an ongoing
Well, I understand enrollment to be part of accreditation because it helps the college stay financially strong.
I'm happy to cite that for you, but, but I think, you know, the, these are, these are things that I would be, if, if you would agree to meet with me in private, we could go over these kinds of things because I, I don't know that it's necessarily, it's not on the agenda. Probably not something we should be discussing because it's not on the agenda. I'm happy to cite that for you, but it's, it's really something, if, if you would agree to meet with me, then we could, if those are real concerns, we
It's important to me to meet with you. I just, I'm also got a lot going on with my life and I'll, I'll share with you what surgeries are coming up in my life and that are impacting more than just me, sir. So I, no, I got more things to say, Chair, if you have a second. I just want to point out that you appointed trustees have done more damage to accreditation than anyone that I know. Because when, when you select, yes, it is. I'm responding to you, sir. You talked about enrollment and this is directly And this is directly related because when you selected the president in your partisan fashion that everyone was observing. That's when the student, it was in May and June, it was two, three percent decreased enrollment. That's when the student enrollment started plummeting down to double digit loss in August.
I, I, I will go over the enrollment numbers and you'll see that, um, for the past ten years, enrollment has fallen three to six percent a year. And it has been passively addressed. That's a strategic issue that the board should have addressed. Five, eight years ago, and it was not addressed. And that's why we're bringing it now because it was not addressed by the board ten years ago.
I absolutely agree. The board has been failing with trustee Wood on the board entirely.
That's all I can do. I, I started in August. I, I can affect it in August. Enrollments were down when I got here, not because of me driving.
Trustee McKenzie.
I wasn't addressing it to you. I was addressing it to the board.
Would you please listen to me? Thank you. If you have issues that you would like to discuss about the college, please answer Dr. Swain's call to meet with him. You bring up things that open.
Sir, I've responded back to him every time he's called.
Please, would you please learn to listen rather than just talk?
Well, you learn the facts. You're saying that I won't meet with them. I absolutely want to meet with them. You guys have no idea what you're talking about.
I think this concludes the president's report. Are there any other trustee questions here? Good. Thank you very much, Dr. Swain. We now have the consent agenda. I need a, a motion for approval of the minutes of August twenty-second. Right of motion.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes for August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are those the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Then I second the motion.
Any discussion? Not appearing, all those in favor sitting by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Then one nay. I think trustee McKenzie votes nay, four votes aye. Unfinished business, the ombudsman program, Dr. Swain.
Yeah, so, um, at the. The previous meetings, um, there was a recommendation that we basically copy U of I's policy. And, and implement, change the name and implemented here. When I presented that, um. Last month with a, just conceptually what they do, which essentially they've contracted the ombudsman out to somebody in New York. Um, it's not even done on campus. Um, and, and the person reports to the board, sorry, to person reports to the president. I, I was told that's, that's, that really wasn't what folks were looking for. Um, and, um. Trustee Banducci said he wanted a different policy that. Compel action from the chair. Ombudsman and compel action inside the college, which I responded back to a question by, um, trustee McKenzie. Um, the, the highlighted areas that that would violate in our standards for accreditation, which are the exact ones that are under review now. Um, so as, as president, I need, I need guidance from the board. Is that, do you, do you want the, the Idaho? Plan, which is absolutely acceptable, would be endorsed by. Any of the accrediting bodies in our, in our region, if we choose to go to somebody else or, um, a plan that would. Um, almost ensure our loss of accreditation. Um, or, or something in between, which is, in, in talking to, uh, my colleagues. Um, a-around the state and, and in back in Virginia, they have a dean of students and students, students bring their, their issues to the dean of students. And for issues, um, that are related to the, the dean of students, that dean of students comes directly to me. Um, and in the case of employees, they report directly that those issues would go to. The, um, head of HR and then the HR, head of HR reports those directly to me. And then the, the policy that we have to clarify and, and, and I'll say, in looking at all the policies out there, this is the part that, that nobody does well. What happens if the, if the person in question is the dean of students? The head of HR or the president or members of the board of trustees, that, that people just, they, they assume that that's not going to happen. Um, and so the, those policies are kind of fuzzy. If we're going to adopt that, we need to clean that up and, and make that work. But I, I would recommend that we go forward with that or, um, hold off for, um, more guidance or, um, discussion or. Um, a different policy.
Procedurally, this item was tabled and brought off the table. So is there a motion to do something with this item at this time?
Mr. Chair. I move that the ombudsman program be postponed. Definitely.
Second. It's been moved in second. To postpone indefinitely the ombudsman program. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I asked the state board of education for some information on ombudsman program statewide. And they were able to provide me information from Idaho State, from BSU and from the University of Idaho. In all of those cases, the ombudsman was tasked with staff and faculty only. With the University of Idaho, that student was given a choice, either the ombudsman or the dean of students. And as the president just mentioned, the ombudsman was a vacant position that has been filled by contract from an out. Firm. I am concerned about the issues that the president has, has brought up. What happens if the dean of students is? The individual or the president or one of our board members. And I don't think the board that's sitting now with only one meeting left has the time. To really fully address the ombudsman program. I've supported it in past discussion, but I think it's time now to table it.
Is your motion to table indefinitely? Okay, clarification and the motion is table indefinitely. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have something to say.
Yes, trustee McKenzie?
I think what this college needs immensely is an ombudsman program for a thousand reasons. And I volunteer that you at least give me one month if people are just going to throw this in the trash to write my own policy. That I think would satisfy accreditation and make everyone happy. So you probably already worked it out beforehand, so whatever. But I can at least ask for one month to write my own policy.
Trustee McKenzie, that's, that's a wonderful offer. And if you. Get that in and meet with Dr. Swain, that would solve the problem if you're not being available for him too. So I think that's a great offer on your part. Is there any further discussion? Not a period, all those in favor sitting by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? Three ayes, no nays, two absences.
So do, do we just vote on tabling it indefinitely? What did we, because I didn't hear an amendment?
Yes, we did.
So it's tabled indefinitely?
Correct.
Unless I bring back a policy myself.
If you bring back a policy, it can go on the agenda.
Really? Because if I bring back any topic by myself, it has to go through the president.
Great.
Even though policies basically say agenda items go to the president to get on the agenda.
We'll move on to new business, tab one, first reading revised faculty employment policy.
So am I clear? If I don't meet with the president, that I don't get my policy on? Is that, is that what's going on here? Am I essentially being blackmailed?
It's a nice suggestion on my part. And it would be kind on your part to maybe follow through on it. Thank you.
So let me get, so let everyone be clear. I'm just going to find out, you know, I'm going to wait a month and find out to see if my policy. Even gets on the agenda if I don't meet. I'm going to find out. Let's, I'm going to tell everyone right now because you assholes are being assholes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I object to the language.
Yeah, I object to that too.
No, you people are bla- blackmailing me. You guys have no idea what's going on in my life.
Stop talking and listen to the rest of the group.
I'm listening to you. You're basically saying that unless I meet with the president, I don't get my policy on there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I recommend, uh, a two-minute recess so trustee McKenzie can compose himself and. Come back.
I'm asking you, do I get my policy on there if I write it? Yes or no?
We will recess for two minutes, the aforementioned, uh, mental change. I'm going to call the meeting back into order. With two minutes of standing up. My mental status is better. Anybody? Else have an improvement of your mental status in the last two minutes?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Couple, couple, yeah, yeah, thank you. Greg, do you have an improvement of your mental status in a couple of minutes here? Can we move on? Not a period. We'll go ahead with the first reading of the revised faculty employment policy. Sherri Simpkins.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Board of Trustees, President Swain. Tonight Doug Anderson, our, my counterpart and good friend for our career technical programs is joining me in case there's any questions. Related to, um, faculty employment, particularly on the career technical side. The policy. It's before you impacts transfer programs. It impacts. Career technical and it impacts our workforce training faculty. So it's really a comprehensive policy. The main changes that you're seeing in the policy are moving away from strictly requiring a master's degree. And considering other credentials that faculty may have, such as professional experience, industry experience. That they can bring to the table. It's very common in the career technical side to rely on those elements. We see it a lot in the workforce training area. Uh, and occasionally on the transfer side. So it's really trying to update that policy to be consistent with those practices. Um, in addition, this policy didn't have a procedure. And so when the policy was rewritten, a procedure was. Did as well. And we are here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? This is the first reading.
I, I have a question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. Should.
Move on to informational items, enrollment analysis, you've already.
Yeah, um, so Steve Kurtz has a, um, a, a few slides to share.
Audio check. Audio check.
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh. Yes, Steve, go ahead. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, Dr. Swain asked me to give a historical analysis of the data. And, uh, I, I feel a little intimidated just because of the audience members here tonight. There's a lot of qualified folks out here who know about. What has happened as society over the, since two thousand and eight, but a good place to start is two thousand and eight. Uh, the, uh, just, uh, before beginning, just a shout out to Lucy Heine, Chris Brewer and Shay Noble. All these slides here were, were their efforts. I just get the opportunity to present the information to you. So I have the easier part tonight. But they did the, the, the. The difficult work to, to get this presentation finished tonight. There's some caveats. Unfortunately, everything is, is hard to see, but the bullets below, I'll read them to you. The, the, each of those bars represent a year. The furthest left is two thousand and eight. And those are, each of those bars represent the fall enrollment. The furthest one is two thousand and twenty-one fall numbers. The, the first three bars represent head counts at their end of term because that was the only data available. The, the fourth bar moving to the right represents census enrollment. So that's, so it is not. Apples, i- apples and apples, there, there are differences among. When we look at the data, the fall twenty-two head count is just an early release based on the numbers as of September twenty-second. It's very preliminary. Uh, at the October board meeting, we'll have a, a full report for the board that's by custom. And that's based upon the census enrollment of October fifteenth. The third bullet is retained head count. That is the, the, the maroon portion, red portion, that is. Fall to fall. So those are the, the enrollment cohort that started the fall term who were still enrolled or received an award. As of the following fall term. So. Fall is the retention variable will be. Tonight. In two thousand and eight, so because the first three years enrollment skyrocketed because of the subprime mortgage crisis. Uh, the unemployment rate at Idaho right at the beginning was about five percent. Uh, the youth unemployment federally was about twelve point seven four percent. And it was crazy time at NIC for those who had been here a long time. We had students showing up. Enrolling all the way even past the first day of school. We had folks showing up, even my former institution, it was mayhem, even the next three years. And, and just incredible time, especially with the federal. just incredible time, especially with the federal funding available as the government averted at least the consequences of that took place. Eventually, unemployment raised all the way up to Idaho in 2010 hit a high of 8.8. And with the youth unemployment, that is 18.33%. So one of every five youth was working. So that's not good. The enrollment though continued in, in fall of 2008 was 4896 and the college was retaining 2,750. At the end of the subprime mortgage crisis, and at the peak there at the top, you see the fourth bar in 2011, that number highest, 6751. The college was retaining 3722. And the data shows that our college did a great job with retaining students. So faculty, staff, especially those that have been around at the time should be very proud of that accomplishment. Then we had a long period of recovery. So that's the second part of this presentation. That's what Dr. Swain alluded to. Since that time enrollment has declined about 3 to 6% a year. And then eventually, as everybody knows, 2020, we have the pandemic and our enrollment dipped just a little bit at that time. You can see preliminarily, we're still down just, just slightly about below 8%, which is good. But the, the whole retention effort has been relatively consistent. So that's, that's the first part, at least one. Doctor Swain, anything to add on this slide before going to the other?
Nope, nope.
Okay. Oops. Oh, I messed up.
While he's doing that, I will say that it's, it's important to keep track of this. Community colleges are unfairly judged because they, we're judged by standards that they judge four years. What does that mean? Well, freshman, a success is somebody coming as a freshman, going to their second year as a sophomore, and then graduating. However, most of our students, they come in and they have, I want to take them, I want to take five math classes and then I'm going to transfer. For us, that's, that counts as a failure because the student did not, was not retained and did not, did not graduate with associate's degree. From the student's perspective, they accomplished exactly what they came here for. They got the five-year, the, we have a phenomenal math program, by the way. I give them a hard time because of their dual credit stuff, but you have calc I, calc II, calc III, discrete math, linear algebra, and differential equations. So all of the math courses you need to prepare for an engineering degree. So you come here, you've got classes with 15 students in them. You have a great relationship with your instructor. You go to U of I and that's where Scott Green has said, your students perform often better than ours. So that's a really cool thing. That's a success for that student. Take six classes, he's set to go, goes to U of I, finishes his engineering degree or her engineering degree and they're a success. But for us, that's a failure because they didn't come back as sophomores and they didn't graduate. But for that student, that is clearly, and apparent, that's clearly success. So, so we're working to come up with other metrics for defining success more than what the state and federal government say. Because most of, for us, success depends on the student. What does a student want to get? If it's take three classes and move on, and that's a success, that should count. We don't, we're not tracking that now. So we're going to, we're going to develop metrics to be able to track that so that we can report out to our community what our community says are successes. I think that's way more important than what the state and federal government say.
Thank you, sir. Great interjection there. This next slide shows the, just wanted to give the audience and the board an idea of the impact dual credit. And at the same time, present those statistics Dr. Swain just alluded to. Over the last, since 2008, the only data that we have available that shows performance is the iPeds cohort for completers.
Tell them what iPeds is.
iPad is the Integrated Post Education. It's the federal database.
It's a big database.
Everyone's reporting, everyone reports the same information and, and it takes a long time. It's Sarah Garcia has financial information that's in there and then the registrar has enrollment. There's, it takes forever to put it in and then after a delay, we get a report. The, the measure of success at the federal the completion rate, and there are several that we use. One is the, the blue line that you see is the completion rate. Anybody who starts only in the fall who's full-time, that ignores, I don't, ignores is a wrong term. That omits.
They don't count.
They don't count, right. Part-time as well as anybody who enrolls into spring for the first time isn't part of a cohort. So that's, the only measure is just a small component of NIC student population. The blue line shows even though enrollments have gone up and down, we generally perform very well with both. The 100, the 150% completion means how the that I start this fall, I have until I have three years to complete my degree. And if I do, then that's count as a success. If not, it's a failure. My son's a perfect example. He went to NIC. He took a lot of dual credit. But he was only, he was only interested in getting his gen ed. He got it done and said, Dad, I'm gonna go ahead and transfer to U of I. He already had like 64 hours and he's there now. He, that was his goal. And unfortunately, we don't have a mechanism, as Dr. Swain said, to, to count that as a success. So a weakness of the system that we generally use for comparison. The bottom number represents the one completion rate. That means if I sign up this fall, I'm not going to get done, correct? So that number is relatively, relatively low. 12% is around the range. The highest was about seven, no, 20% and actually it's increased to 25% in the fall of 2020. So that, that speaks accolades to our faculty and staff. But look at the yellow. The yellow represents dual credit. NIC has always been ahead of the game with, with dual credit, a great relationships with the community and the high schools. The, the, the number is 531 is in 2008. And the largest number I see there, it looks the peak is in 2019. That, that's the fourth bar from the right. That is 1,479 students. And even with the issues that are going on in the work that's, that our community engagement team is, is, is working on our dual credit, we're doing fairly well.
1,200 students this fall.
Yes, sir. And that number has even improved. I don't even know, but we're close, only a 2% decline. So given where we are, that, that speaks accolades to our faculty and staff to get the word out. And our counselors, those that work at the high school, and we appreciate the relationships with our, with our school districts. But at least want to give you a, a snapshot. Hey, I hit the right this time. Yay. This one is, is the same thing, but that blue line across was back to the first graph that showed the bottom tables. It's, it's the range of the percentages each year for retention. As you see, it's almost straight across.
I have a question. We're, a while back, we were working on business intelligence graphs and like metrics, because there's a lot of metrics associated with college and then we're trying to make them even public. I was under the impression of is these part of that?
Mr. Chairman, trustee McKenzie, yes, they will be. And we just had a meeting today, David Chang, Ken Wardenski's and his crew, Lisa Clark, Tammy Robertson, of course, Chris, Lucy, and Shay. It was exciting to see the mission fulfillment dashboard. They were testing it out. We have to work with Laura's folks, communication and marketing with the web component. But now with the transition, we don't have to worry about the number of licenses for the dashboard. Everyone can come up and see them. And these enrollments reports will be available. That's part of what Dr. Swain has charged us. We're trying to get it done, Ken, by I think maybe January, February, or whatever, but it's, we're, we're moving forward. And that's a top priority for the IR team. Absolutely, trustee McKenzie.
And the, one of the challenges is that the data hasn't been collected and aggregated previously. And so now we're going back, where can we find the data? How do we pull it in? How do we make sure that it is consistent that we're measuring, we're looking at the same thing year over year? And so it's, it's, it should be easy, which is not. And so the, the, between Steve and Ken and and the whole data team, they're, they're putting a lot of effort into pulling this data together, making sure it's correct, and then sharing it. So it will be transparent. It will be out on the public. I mean, that's, that's the whole goal is to, is to get it out there. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's exciting times. We, we're trying to get all of our campus college measures out there so that anyone who wants to to, to take a look at what we have available for data, they'll be able to do so, trustee McKenzie.
Are there any other questions from trustees?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much, Steve. And we'll move on to position searches.
I do have a question.
Trustee McKenzie, you had a question?
Yeah, you may not have an answer to this and it might not be something you can answer, but when barriers to student enrollment is cost one of those for NIC? Like if we were to, I don't know, have a, I'll just throw a crazy idea. If we were to drop full-time enrollment tuition by $500 to, to spur enrollment, is, is there a metric to be like, we can predict that'll be a 3% boost in enrollment, but it'll cost us a million dollars?
We had money on the table that we couldn't give away.
Yeah, it's highly inelastic, unfortunately.
Now, those are foundations scholarships that we couldn't give away?
Granting aid and, and foundation money that was available and folks did not apply. And so that's, I mean, that's another thing we're working on is to try to expedite that so that an application to NIC is the same as an application. It's the same process. You apply to NIC, you automatically apply for financial aid. So we're working on that because sometimes students don't know. And so, so I think that it's the lack of knowledge is probably barrier to finance is not the lack of money available to a word is grants and aid or, or scholarships.
Chairwold, Dr. Swain, I'm gonna hope he doesn't get upset at me for this, but Lloyd Duman mentioned to me that it was his hypothesis. We, we had some great retention data over the last couple of years. It's because his theory is because of the investment with, with scholarships. So that does help at least on the, on the retention and completion side.
Yeah. But, but it's, in terms of a barrier to entry, it's, it's not really a barrier because we do have funds available.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay. Do you want to move on to the?
Thank you again, Steve.
So again, and this is, while it's position searches, it's also a critical component of our accreditation because hiring and replacing, but replacing senior leaders was identified on the action letter. And so we are, we are now proceeding with that. The search for our vice president for finance and business is proceeding. We had 23 applicants at last count. I think that position is now, the, the posting is now closed and the committee will begin reviewing applications and start to select the most competitive in the coming weeks for interviews and, and moving on in the process. A big one and was the, I'm, I'm gonna I'm gonna just call it the provost, but, but, but I'll get that was a bit of a discussion. We pulled together, so, so when I got here, I, I, I thought this was settled, that the provost position was settled. And, and a lot of folks came to me and said, it was a kind of a necessity. Faculty didn't, we're, we're not consulted. Faculty senate didn't have input. So there were a lot of changes in leadership that under a shared governance model or collaborative governance model, they should have been considered. So they wanted to have a voice. So we pulled together a team of, I think it was 25 people to, to look at that. So 25 people from across campus. And so while it was collaborative, it was also very compressed. Because I said, this, we've got to solve these problems now. So I said, you're welcome to come. Don't be sensitive. Not, not, you know, everybody's idea is going to be heard, but not everybody's idea can be accepted. So we're gonna, we, we had a meeting on the 8th of September. And with 25 people in the room from all across campus, identified what they liked and didn't like about the current model, identified models that they would prefer going forward. And then define a job description and identify people to participate in the search committee. We did all that in three hours. Anybody in academia like that's, that's like a two-year committee work that we compressed into three hours. And I think everybody felt heard. Not, not everybody agreed with the solution. Not everybody agreed with the process, but everybody felt heard. And, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back and say to the board that the ultimately a model that they, they don't, they didn't like the name of provost because they felt it was forced on them. So it's going to be, the, the title is Vice President and Chief Academic Officer. But is very similar, the same as a provost model. So that, that was meaningful to them. So, so we are, now we moved forward with that search. It went live on Friday. Steve is chairing the search. And we, we have enlisted the support of AGB to help us person. And I say that the, the provost, chief academic officer, whatever you want to call it, of a community college is one of the most difficult positions to find. And the reason for that, you hear some, some, you heard some of that tonight. We have no, the, the workforce training center, no credit, not for credit. It's, it's direct relationship with businesses where we are setting up programs to help train people in business. And, and so nobody at a four-year institution does that. That's not something that happens. Career and technical education, as you heard Doug Anderson get up and, and talk. Career technical education does not happen at a four-year at a two-year institution, you have general and we often refer to as our associate's degree or transfer program. So that is what, that is the closest to what a four-year institution would know about, but it's a third of what we do. Maybe less than that in terms of gross numbers. So finding somebody that knows something or has experience in all of those things is really an important task. And so we've reached out to AGB to help us find that person. It's kind of like searching for a unicorn. We really want to find a good person that's going to help us lead the, the organization forward. So that, that, that is well underway. I think we'll, we'll, I, I hope we're successful in that. I think we've got all the pieces in place to make work. The, the last thing, two other important positions for the accreditation process, and that is the director of admissions and the registrar. And the registrar is the one that is like the accountant for academic records. That's really important. And admissions is our interface to the recruitment effort. We recruit them, they come in and they meet with admission. So both of those things you see contribute to the decline because, well, at least the admission does contribute to the decline because we don't have a full-time person in that role yet. So we do have three applicants for the director of admissions and applicants for the registrar. Those, I believe, are, those positions are still open. They're still accepting applications for those positions, but at some point in the near future will close. 23, 25 is a pretty decent number to, 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 to start with. So those things are going well. And those are the four remaining positions that we really have to fill to meet the, the senior leader replacement that is identified in the accreditation action letter. That concludes my.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Swain regarding this?
Did we skip future agenda items?
No.
Because we're on to enrollment analysis and position searches update. We haven't discussed upcoming agenda topics.
What are you talking about?
Unfortunately, no, it's
upcoming agenda topics?
Correct.
I did skip that.
Yep.
You've discussed it sort of off and on all night tonight, but is there anything to add to that?
It's, it's gonna, you're gonna continue to see reports on enrollment. How we can do a better job of, of, of really digging into the data and, and accreditation and the searches. Those are the critical things now and they all kind of feed into the accreditation. So those will continue to be agenda items.
All right. Well, I have other agenda items I'd like to see on there.
Okay.
So I would like to
You can bring those president when you meet with him.
Well, let the public see the treatment that I'm afforded. Okay, I'd like to have the fourth ground lease price on the future agenda. That was a comment, a public comment, and the appraisal is way, it's That was a comment, a public comment and the appraisal is way, it's currently way under the appraised lease price. And when you factor in, I'd like to just have it on the agenda because there's some topics, very important topics. In fact, that I would like to bring before the college's attention, like CLERIA compliance.
Okay.
And the risk that we're exposed by doing this lease that we're doing right now. I think it's a bad idea. So put it on the agenda because I'd like to talk about it. Yes or no?
Have we given them notice yet? We, we're in the process of giving them notice to
Well, then that's great. Let's put it on the agenda and get an update.
Okay. Any other comment?
Yeah, I would like an agenda item for Greg's ombud program and I will solicit the president's written feedback.
So
Yes or no?
Well, so the ombudsman policy cannot go on the agenda until it's gone through the process. And the process for the those kinds of policy changes is it goes to the president because that's entry point. And from the president, it goes to faculty senate and the other constituency groups for them to review before it can come to the board. That's the policy. And so the reason why it can't go on the agenda immediately is it has to go through the process. So I'm happy to take that and, and get it into that process for
No, I've been burned by this process before. You know, we don't have, the board does not have to pass. We can even put it as an informational item, though I would like it as an action item so the board can vote to then refer to the president or really honestly, you're going to see it before and to refer to the senate. That's what I would like to have.
I'm happy to take a look at it then and, and see if it's, you know, if it's, if it's, and I'll, I'll having to review it. And then if it's, if it is, you know, has, has the if, if it, if it will fit the, if, if it will meet accreditation requirements and has a chance of being passed by the faculty senate, then I'm happy to put it on the agenda for consideration.
Do you have other questions you wanted to ask? Trustee McKenzie. Not appearing. We'll move on to remarks for the good of the order. Are there any?
Oh, Ken, I have a question.
You missed your chance.
Well, I have a question. I'm going to ask it. So the feedback that we got from the NIC community regarding the provost meeting, could that be relayed to the board? You mentioned what the community liked and didn't like about the provost model. I'd be interested in hearing their thoughts.
So there's a, I, I think that's internal operations and I don't know that that's necessarily something we that I, I don't, I don't think there was notes taken. It was an open meeting. It was all discussion. And so, and, and I, I think it was very much operational. So I, I don't know that that's appropriate to present at a, at a board meeting.
Trustee McKenzie, the board does policy.
I wasn't directing the model, sir. I was asking for information on what the community thinks of the current model. I didn't even make the change, sir. So don't be saying I'm directing operations.
Do you have any further questions? Not appearing. I'm ready for remarks for the good of the order. Are there any? I have one. I want to thank Dr. Swain. He hasn't even been here two months and he's been so busy making connections all over this community. When I asked him for a time to meet, to go over the agenda, he looked at his schedule and he says, well, I think I can do about 11, but I'm busy from eight in the morning till eight at night. So I want to thank you for the job you've been doing and thank you for working me in. No other business appearing. This meeting is adjourned.